I think the plan was to pick up on the future land use element review. We haven't introduced any new information or new materials. With the exception of, we do have, we can pass these down, updated.
I think I passed.
She passed most of them around.
Yeah, that place-based area map, we just updated that with roads on it so you could identify where some of those boundaries are and things may be. So I believe we left off, if you're looking at the old, or if you're looking at the strike through underline set of, from June 14th, we were on the policy 5.5.2. The old policy 5.5.2. And if you recall, we were just working our way through questions. A lot of this stuff on the mixed use is, a lot of it's proposed to be removed because it was a lot of design criteria that's better addressed in our land development codes. So I'll stop there and y'all can pick up as you like.
What number are we at?
5.2.2. On the old, under the column it says current language. That's kind of where we left off.
Okay. If I may, just so that I'm at the right place. 5.2.2. Mixed use centers.
Correct, sir.
Okay.
That becomes 5.1, right?
2.5.1, right, it gets renumbered and moved under objective 2.5.
2.5.1 looks like a relatively minor change.
It's a de minimis.
Yeah.
What a stunningly consistent segue. Mixed use centers. I did, for the record, I did call staff today and I just needed some clarification that I didn't think needed to be brought up at the meeting because it would get us off on the side, but it had to do with mixed use centers. Ms. Vincent, would this be an appropriate section for me to bring up my concerns about triggers for mixed use centers to meet storm waters? Would that be addressed at a better location?
This section is really about urban design criteria and mixing of uses versus, I think, what you're, but, I mean, it's probably as, as good a place as any. I mean, certainly with that particular development, we were trying to implement a mixed use center on that property. That was the origins of it, so.
But this is more of a definition and not a criteria, isn't it? I mean, if you, if you refer to a mixed, and be complying with other parts that talk about, you know, drainage and.
You might be spot on, and that's my point. And you know what, I wasn't actually referring to Mara's, Ms. Alley got a different conversation about redevelopment for existing properties that are non-conforming, that what triggers might bring them into conforming, and those would be mixed use centers.
I think if you wanted to apply it to mixed use centers, yes. I think you were talking about just in general, non-conforming properties, and I think he was also looking at a storm.
You might want to pull that microphone over your way just so it might pick up.
Just for a reminder, they did say to make sure we all speak directly into the microphone and that we don't move them so that they're, that they can pick us up appropriately.
Can I stand up? We were discussing kind of what, for properties that are non-conforming now, in terms of maybe landscaping, stormwater requirements, X, Y, Z of codes, what then makes them come into compliance when something new goes into place? For example, at the Manatee Village Shopping Center, that's something that just had some facade improvements, but it didn't trigger any sort of site improvements to come up to compliance with current codes. So I think Mr. Vessi was looking at, is there a way to put something in there to talk about triggers for redevelopment of properties, of when they need to come into compliance? And since we talked, I was kind of thinking, I didn't know for comp plan purposes, if maybe the best method is to put a policy that talks about evaluate options.
Yes.
For redevelopment of properties to come in, or non-conforming properties come into compliance, and then the actual code can then go into our land development code, but at least gives the policy base for us to make that correction in the future. So that was, that's as far as I got from this afternoon.
That seems pretty far, so you're correct in the definition part, and so, does that mean that this is the right location or not the right location?
I definitely think it warrants going in the future land use element. I think I'd have to look at, I think we can make a note to come up with the policy, and then I can look at all of our objectives and, once we get through everything, and see where it best fits.
That sounds wonderful, thank you very much.
So it would be like a general policy of evaluate, you know, land development codes and regulations to, you know, clarify or strengthen requirements for retrofitting of non-conforming site, site construction type of things. We can come up with something that, moving things toward compliance.
And, and we need to add that to our list then when we have a workshop to deal with the code again and revisions.
Yes, yeah, so, yeah, that would be one of the things that will get into the list of land development code amendments that need to be, as part of the overall package when we're, once we get done with the land use, the comp plan, then we move in directly into the land development code updates.
Yeah, because it's unfortunate they've spent that much money on that project and not improved anything as far as the site.
Can I go off on a little bit off-center on that, if possible? One of the things that, and this goes back to sustainability, and I know this is the wrong time to mention it, but one of the things that we don't do well, and we haven't done well, the state of Florida hasn't done well, is designating, except a little maybe islands in a parking lot, that I'd rather lose parking spaces and have more green space in some of these big box or large parking lot locations that make that a requirement as part of any, you know, permitting, you know? You know, I can say Publix would, you know, take about 20 spaces out of the Publix parking lot because you can afford to lose 20 spaces and plant trees.
Well, the post-COVID world reality is that a lot less people go shopping, so those big parking lots don't need to be as big as they are anymore.
So somewhere in our materials, I don't know, I don't have it in front of me, but we have a, there's a, we have an exhibit that is an urban heat islands map for the city. So to your point, you know, I would much rather, I would like to build, you know, policy and regulations around reducing those urban heat islands, and they're, you can pick them out easily. So if there's a project that's being developed and it's in an urban heat island, then the emphasis will be on tree plantings, not parking, and you would be, and, you know, you would be able to reduce parking or dictate that it has to happen.
We don't, I'm sorry, we don't have, the city of Tarpon Springs really doesn't have that much space to, where you would see that type of parking lot, except on that 19 corridor at this point.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and I know I'm going off of this, but I don't care. There's got to be some incentives the city can implement to go to Walmart or people on the public shopping plaza, so look, if you do this, this is what we're going to do for you, because those are existing issues. There exist, there are existing heat, like you said, heat zones, and we don't have anything in place, or is that something that's being contemplated by the sustainability committee?
So you, again, you may, you may want to put a policy in that, that is kind of directional in that, you know, explore incentives to, you know, or, you know, evaluate incentives to, you know, increasing tree planting, you know, tree plantings through city participation with private development, some private partner, something like that.
Grant, yeah.
You know, I mean, we, you know, we do have the Tree Bank, and we have money in those that we collected, you know, is there a way to, you know, parlay that into some sort of a, you know, a tree planting program on private properties, you know, for places like that? Again, having, having it being maybe tied specifically, you know, to larger policies of reducing urban heat islands and things like that. So I think you can be directional in, you know, with policy statements, that that's the direction you'd like to, like us to go in.
I'd love to see the city take a bold step and do something like that and let everybody follow suit.
Yeah, and it's.
And I know I'm off of this, but that's, that's just been bugging me for a while.
Well, and for, for the money that they've spent on a project like that one, for example, you know, it's, it's a drop in the bucket. It doesn't mean anything to them as far as.
Look at the PR.
Cost of doing it, yeah.
Look at the PR.
And, and they certainly don't need the amount of parking that is with that center.
All right, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
I think those were all great thoughts and maybe why we're here.
Well, then, I hope, I hope somebody, because I'm not organized enough to do it, is keeping track of these things to, to speak about it at another venue.
Commissioners, if you're listening.
Yeah.
So, so if I may, I think the concept of heat islands, so rather than being selective about particular developments or just labeling one, just the concept of heat islands, because that creates a side objective piece of data that says, hey, if you fit into the heat island criteria, then therefore, these are the triggers. It moves you to the side of what we may address that keeps you from allowing a property that obviously is not containing their own storm water to contain their storm water, which is a life safety issue, and reducing our overall heat. So I like that heat island concept that you just brought up, that puts teeth into something that really makes sense to everyone, other than, I just don't like all your blacktop.
Right.
Okay. Sorry.
No, not a problem.
An incentive could be something as simple as a reduction in the parking space requirements or that, just something that's kind of an even trade-off.
Yeah, oddly enough, you know, you almost have to force them to reduce parking rather than incentivizing them to reduce parking. So, I mean, it's, you know, for, for developers, especially on the retail side, they want as much parking as they can get. So it is something that I think would almost have to be mandated, that if you're in like an urban heat island area, then maybe, you know, this is your required, your required parking must be reduced by X amount of percentage and replaced with, you know, tree islands and, you know, however we structure that, so, yeah.
Percentage thereof. And a lot of times I've seen the triggers been like 50% of the site or 50% of the building being, you know, remodeled, redeveloped, revitalized, or whatever, whatever threshold you feel is.
They define that by a caliper, the size of a tree.
Our code specifies a minimum caliper tree for planting. So, you know, maybe it's a more mature tree.
Okay, I'm sorry to digress again.
Okay, so we're at 5.2.3 on the markup version of the future land use element goals, objectives, and policies. And it looks like 5.2.3 changed to five, or 2.5.2. But in terms of the verbiage, it's basically the same.
And then, a lot of the rest of the stuff in this section is, is proposed to be deleted because it's a lot of very specific design criteria for, you know, building facades, and it's very, you know, design oriented, and it was put in place prior to the smart code being adopted, which has a lot of basically the same things in it. It was kind of a precursor to that, so that's why, you know, we feel like it's misplaced at this point.
A lot of these policies under mixed use, you've actually got deleted.
We do.
Okay, is there, is there any significant deletions? I know, I know we probably want to go through each one, but is there any significant deletions that we need to be aware of? There's a lot, because.
I'm kind of looking at your density ones. I'm curious, are you just, those are you moving to a different section, or how are you addressing some of those? Because there's, there's a little graph in, in the next section down.
Those are, they're specifically covered in the future land use categories themselves.
Okay, got it.
Ma'am, sorry, would it be possible if Alley could put, I noticed when I was re-watching the meetings, it's hard to follow what we're doing because we're looking at the map, but nobody else can like kind of see, can we just, like, as we're talking about each one, can we have it up on there so we?
The actual.
Like the strike through?
The strike through underline, we'll see what we can pull up. It's not as easy as you would think.
It's hard to.
Why do you need a little delay? Because it's very tiny from back here, but I'll get it as big as I can.
Yeah, that's good.
Getting down to page.
About page 14.
Since there are so many that are similar on strike through, if I may draw attention to policy 5.2.1.2, which is the bottom of the page. Mixed use centers shall, and then the proposed language, mixed use shall comply with the requirements of the city's multimodal transportation district. Help me understand what our multimodal transportation district is and how it impacts this.
So the multimodal transportation district is, I don't know if we've got a handy map for it or not, that was adopted back in 2008, '09 timeframe. That's, and we, we'll see if we can find the map for you. And it was originally, it was adopted in order to get us to there, yeah, the multimodal transportation district. So it was, that encompasses and actually expands beyond these, the smart code area and the sponge docks, but it incorporates all of that. And at that point in time, when we were trying to find a way to encourage mixed use and redevelopment at a scale that would, you know, did two things, would complement the area, but would also provide a little bit of incentive for redevelopment, the, we still had strict transportation concurrency in place, and so Alt.19 was a failing level of service. So basically, you were real ham, you were hamstrung in order to be able to do anything from a redevelopment standpoint. So the city went through, and under the state statute at that point in time, one of the ways to deal with transportation concurrency was to adopt a multimodal transportation district that looked not just at vehicle level of service, but bike and pedestrian and transit level of service in a defined area. So the better your street grid, the better your sidewalks, the better your bike and pedestrian, you know, connections, you, you come up with a, you know, it's kind of a score on a, for the multimodal district. So the state acknowledged the multimodal transportation district, and what that did was, you know, it very much, you know, has to operate as a, it's, it recognizes a mixed use area with multiple, you know, and so you're really capitalizing on being able to walk to destinations and less vehicle trips. So it established a level of service requirements for both bike and pedestrian. So there was a list of projects that were identified that needed to be, or they're targeted to be completed, like broken sidewalk segments or where the word sidewalk segments and things. So it was meant to be a way that, so through increasing, you know, an incremental increase in density and intensity, which is what the smart code essentially was, for a developer to take advantage of that, they had to, they had to do certain improvements and things. Now, that was working well until probably 2014 timeframe. probably two thousand fourteen timeframe. We would basically, you, you, there's a lot of tech, if you read the whole multimodal transportation district document, you'll see everything in there. But basically, it came up with another impact fee, if you will, a multimodal fee, that a developer could pay in lieu. It was in addition to the countywide transportation impact fee, or they could do a project. If there was a sidewalk segment that was identified, they could do that. So it was a way to kind of get from A to B and address concurrency. Coming forward full force, forward to today, transportation concurrent concurrency is, is pretty much gone. We have the countywide, you know, ordinance that basically says that, you know, it's almost kind of a pay and go type of situation. So the, the multimodal transportation district is still there. It's not functioning from a, from the standpoint of getting projects done in terms of completing a sidewalk segment, or still collecting those, those funds. It doesn't function in that way, but it is still very much a, the basis of mixed use, you know, development patterns. So you're capitalizing on livable, walkable communities and things of that nature. Caroline, have I hit everything?
Yeah, it was just that we're also going to be taking a look at.
And we. Yeah, and we are, that's, that's been on our list to, we want to update it, to bring it up to modern, you know, modern times here. I mean, we, we went so far as back in, I want to say two thousand ten, eleven timeframe, we actually took this to the Board of Commissioners and tried to get them to formally adopt the, the fees and everything, and they, they, they opted not to at that point in time, and they basically directed us to just kind of negotiate with the developers as they came in to either get a pay in lieu or get a project, but it was never formally adopt, other than being adopted into the comp plan, but the, but the, the, the formal, you know, operations of it kind of ceased around, you know, like I said, two thousand thirteen, fourteen timeframe. So we want to update it and reintroduce it and make it work. So.
So that makes perfect sense. That was a great answer. Thank you very much. You've given me several good answers today.
I'm having a good day.
Yeah, it, it'll end tomorrow, right?
It will.
So I got a follow-up question, and not to get too deep, and that would perhaps explain why today, if we looked at that M T, M M T D district, and the central artery of that is not the Pinellas Trail. Oh, it's Pinellas Avenue. It's got the trail right there. So Pinellas, Pinellas Avenue is to the left, so it's outside that. Of course, the trail goes right there.
Yep.
There is not continuous sidewalk on either side of the street from Klosterman. Oh, it's, it's farther south. That would make sense. So you can't physically walk from here to here. It's a hopscotch. It's bizarre. There's broken pieces. It's off to the side. There's some sidewalk. There's no sidewalk. But that doesn't apply to this. I'm just pointing out the obvious, that it strikes me as absolutely bizarre that from our south gateway to our north gateway, that a human being cannot safely walk on the sidewalk within something called our multimodal transportation district. And now I understand why. It's because there just was no incentive, or it just lost its importance, or it's not close enough to the sponge docks, so everything's south. This didn't work.
Part of the county too?
Well, that's, that's the other thing too.
There is problem with that.
I'll be, Alt nineteen's a state road, so, you know, that's, we have to work.
So we don't get it, we don't get to enforce any sidewalk criteria on alternate nineteen?
That's going to be FDOT's jurisdiction, and you can get, you can get sidewalks on state roads, but you need cooperation from FDOT.
I mean, we could require a development, like if somebody was going to develop something new, we could require them to put one in, but we have to work with FDOT.
But there's not a mechanism to look back and fix all the missing pieces, broken juxtaposed.
And that's exactly what the M M T D was designed to do, was to identify the gaps, create a work plan, and fund it.
So since we're talking, so you brought up that area. There's a, there's a property on Alt nineteen, obviously it's for sale, and I forgot what they said, eighty something units. You know what I'm talking about? It's just, it's just south of the car wash, I mean, the golf course, south of the golf course.
On the corporate county.
That's where that is? Yeah, okay.
Okay, you've answered my question. I didn't mean to take that too far. So that reintroduction of the multimodal transportation district is something that's happening, whether, not part of this at all, it's just something that needs to be brought back up as good business.
It, it does, and in fact, you know, I, I think our goal really would be to have a multimodal transportation plan for the whole city. Not, not just this district as well, so.
Going back to that property as an example, okay, because it's not within the city limits, it's a county property, would, would we be able to require, when they go to annex, that's why we talked about annexation as being a big issue, how do you require, you know, the, the, I guess you call the multimodal access points, or to be extended to properties like that, otherwise, you know, you're, we're, we're missing the opportunity to force anybody who wants to develop that to, to, because now you're dumping eighty something cars onto Alt nineteen. Maybe more.
Difficult. I mean, to, I mean, you know, it, 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 it depends on how it, you know, if, if it's, I, I just, I don't know. We, we would have, let's say it's non-conforming, it doesn't have sidewalks, if the county lets them do that for some reason. And they want to annex the property in, I mean, if it's something that we felt extremely, you know, strong, strongly about, you know, I, I'll defer, I'll defer to the city attorney, but maybe there could be some sort of a specific annexation agreement that says that X, Y, and Z has to be done, or, I, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's really getting into the weeds.
I, I, actually, as you were asking the question, I'm looking to see if you have the ability to connect impact fees to annexations. I actually don't, I, I'm not positive that you can do that. I know that, that you can put conditions on an annexation, but an impact fee specifically is something that's very regulated by state statute, and I'm not positive that you could connect it to that.
You know the property I'm talking about?
Oh, yeah. I got, I got a plan for down, I live down south. I got a plan for down south, but I won't drop.
I mean, I think that's the property that you're referring to.
Yeah, it's like, it's a, Wykel has it advertised, you know, eighty, eighty-eight units or whatever, then I'm looking at the density. I don't know how much acreage it is, but it seemed like that would be a lot of density.
If it's the same one about five years ago, he went in front of the county, the owner, with an attorney that we know representing him, and got a density condenser.
It's an affordable housing development.
To do, they attempted that, those tax credit projects are wickedly difficult. He was too late in the game for that, but he was trying to do a seven-story tower. I happen to be, live in Greschi Point, HOA, we were part of the mailer, they wanted to put a tower up that was within sightline.
Yeah, there, there is a development agreement, and my understanding is the development agreement is still active with the county for an affordable housing development there. So I'm sorry.
No, apparently, um, there's, the penny for Pinellas has done well for, Pinellas for affordable housing, which I don't think that when we, everyone voted for that, that that was going to be.
There was a substantial set aside for affordable housing at the county.
And I might have missed this, I'm sorry. Uh, the center versus area, what's the significance of that change? All the centers are changed to area.
Mixed use of area versus centers.
I mean, do we have a, um, is there like a qualifying number, or a, what is it, how is that signif?
Use area.
Spread out.
Areas shall comply with the requirements of the city's multimodal transportation district. I don't recall why we changed it from areas to centers, or centers to areas.
I think that we, I think it's because mixed use center is not necessarily a term that we typically use, and mixed use area is more all encompassing. It can apply all over the city if you have a mixed use project, whereas a mixed use center seems like something that's actually designated.
So I think that it was just not. But there's no definition for either one, then?
I'm sorry.
There's no specific definitions for center or area, then?
Well, we have a definition for mixed use, um, so I would say anything that's mixed use involves under the mixed use definition.
I mean, it was clearly changed, so I just wanted to ask. I mean, I hear, I get.
It was coming out originally, the, I think the center designation was coming out, again, we, a lot of this, a huge amount of this, if not all of this section, was, was taken verbatim out of the countywide plan rules. And so they were very focused on town centers, mixed use centers, so a lot of that lan, language came out of the countywide plan.
Well, it seems, I mean, so center versus area seems to make the area more broad, and then adhere to comply means, well, we'll try to follow, comply is very strict. So you're making a, a, a very, I mean, it's clarified language, but it's, it's stricter language. You're saying that the area around the centers now must strictly comply with this, where before it was this center had to adhere to it, so. And, and some of the reasonings I like, if they just said, you know, stricter language, or more inclusive, or something, it's a little bit more not clarified, because it doesn't really clarify things. You're changing it, you know, it's, it's.
Understood. Yeah, and.
If that's what we need to do, for whatever reason, that's fine, because if it's with the code. You know, and then I, the smart code, I had a question about that.
Okay.
Because I, I recently was informed that the smart code, or anything that's more restrictive, cannot be changed until twenty twenty four, um, if, if our area, and I'm not sure exactly if it's like the last part of Tarpon Springs, is within a hundred miles of, um.
We were just talking about that before the meeting.
Ian or Matthew, what was the other one? I forgot.
We're outside of it.
So we don't, we can change, we can set the smart code up to be, because I feel, when was the smart code put in?
Um, it was adopted in two thousand eleven, yeah.
And I feel like we've kind of progressed, I mean, may, be, needed a revamp for, because we're actually, we're referring to it in here, and I don't think that's really wise, because that should also be reworked.
According to our forward Pinellas contacts.
So we're out of that zone, that's good enough.
We are out of the zone, so, um.
The only Pinellas County cities that.
We're, that's great, yeah.
Yeah, so, thankfully.
Thank you, I was, um.
Yeah, no, no worries. The other thing with the mixed use areas, it, you know, in the, it's really that, and, and maybe this doesn't clarify it as, as well as it should, the way it's written. The, the, the mixed use areas, like the smart code, the sponge docks, that, that regularly, they, they all have to have a, their own specific special area plan in order to, which gets adopted as part of the comp plan. So what we're saying is, when you're, when you're adopting that, you need to take into consideration the multimodal transportation district requirements as part of that special area plan. And, you know, like if, um, if you look at the, the special area plan for the sponge docks and the, and the, and the CRA, so there's a lot of, in addition to kind of just the, the character districts and establishing densities, intensities, and, and preferred uses and stuff like that, there's also a whole section of that document that is, you know, place-based objectives and thing, you know, more like physical improvements and things that we would like to see, or special, you know, so it's, it's really trying to get to that with these changes, so it's, it's, you know, you know, that, it's going to be more in the, those specific mixed use area land use designations, which we'll get to in a little bit.
That's what I was just going to say. I was looking back, and, and we refer to like mixed use land use categories, and we specified in the objectives and policies, these categories fall under a mixed use land use category, so we're just trying to be more consistent with the terminology. But yes, that's where our tie was.
I always just ask, you know, when I think of these, you know, my transportation, I, I live in the area, so I just visualize everything, and I'm thinking of the, the trolley, and I, I know how these things, the trolley will run you down, they don't, you know. I mean, it will, so, you know, when we think about, you know, like, other things that are coming our way, like more people on the sidewalks, you know, like, I'm trying to think of everything as, as comprehensively as a whole when everything comes our way. I want transportation, but I don't want stricter codes and enforcements on our businesses or residents.
Can we go back up real quick to five point two point nine? Where it says the change is the land development code to reduce parking requirements to create maximum parking standards. I don't, what's a maximum parking standard?
So, just like I was talking about a little while ago, um, retailer, right now, our, all of our land development codes are minimum parking requirements. So four per, if it's a retail development, four per thousand parking spaces, um, that's the number of parking you need. A lot of, especially in big box retail and stuff like, and office development, things like that, the developer wants five or six per thousand. So, and it's to that point that you're getting, that's, you're, you're sacrificing potential for trees and other things and, and amenities for parking, because we don't have, we don't have a way to tell a developer, no, you can't, I mean, if they're still otherwise meeting their minimum tree planting requirements and their storm water requirements, we don't have a mechanism to tell them, you don't need six spaces per thousand, because we have minimums, not maximums.
But if we, if you have a, like you said, a heat, a heat, a heat zone.
And this is all part of that, yes. That would tie in with establishing those.
Comes right back to that overall driving concept. Because then you don't, forgive me, then you don't have to change all those building requirements, all that abstract, you just key back to reduction of heat sink, heat islands, and then it triggers that for every single development that there is.
We, we talked, before you got here, we talked about sacrificing parking for more effective greens, greenscaping, instead of just some bushes on border bushes, but really intense planting.
That's part of the code hacking. I researched that.
Or some little oaks that are dead in.
Eventually eliminate all parking.
Right, they just abandon it.
The water, they just plant them, now you're approved, and they die.
And if I may be so bold, it's not so much just to get more green, is that it, it's a fabulous place, if done in a different way, I'm going to get a little bit wonky here. If done is, as opposed to a mound, and in a reverse, it becomes its own self-fulfilling storm water retention, as we need more and more of it.
I haven't seen the new Barbie movie, but apparently she just floats from the house into the car, so, you know. We just start to utilize just floating around, and we won't even need to park it.
I'll have to pull up my Ken dolls.
That's a frightening picture. Alright. So we got a lot of strike through, strike through, strike through, and looking for where we actually have changes versus strike through. And actually, most of the rest of that section, that objective is is stricken through. Do we get to five point four, where we start talking about workforce housing and portable housing and things of that nature?
While you're, while you're looking at that, um, I'll just share that what I do see is that, um, when you're, there was a case involving connecting to a sewer and water system, um, and an impact fee for, essentially an impact fee, and they said basically that because it wasn't based on the actual impact, it was just based on them being added to, to the city's water lines, um, that that was not sufficient to support any sort of impact fee. So I'd have to kind of, just, just on first blush, it doesn't look like you could do it, because it has to be connected, reasonably connected to the, the use and what you're charging it for.
Well, can't you just title it a different name?
A rose by any other name. So, um, but it, it's something that I can look at, to see if we can legally do that.
Under section five point four, the, the non, the new one, right below the new policy that addresses, would this be a location for additional types, I'm going to read the last sentence. Zoning districts to allow for additional housing types to take advantage of existing density. And I'm only going to mentally interpret that. Would that be tied to accessory dwellings and a relaxation of where accessory dwellings can be, and perhaps even the encouragement of accessory dwellings, AKA, this is my new term, granny flats. I just love how that goes together. Granny flats, or accessory dwellings, garages with flats above, that in some areas might be discouraged, but as we need to increase density at certain. that in some areas might be discouraged, but as we need to increase density at certain points, they should be encouraged. So, is that a point where that is addressed, or is that somewhere else?
So, this policy ties in pretty nicely with, if you go, remember our place-based area map? And we identify like our suburb, the suburban neighborhoods, and we recognize there, a lot of those areas historically developed at densities less than what is allowed on paper, but they're established, single-family districts. So, those are the areas, so in those areas, maybe granny flats, maybe duplexes, you know, it's something that would, there are areas to, yeah, exactly, where you could introduce some, some gentle, you know, increases that, to accommodate some of those housing needs. Yeah, does that, did that answer?
It does, it does. First, there'd have to be a demand and a request for that, or there, there'd have to be the okay for it, and then the demand and request.
Right, again, it's, it's a, that place-based area map sets those up for where they could take place, but obviously I don't, you know, we have to be very mindful about how we would actually implement something like that, and it would have to be, you know, community input and involvement for the affected areas to say, hey, right now, single-family detached is pretty much the only thing. Now, granny flats or accessory dwelling units are allowed in every single-family residential district in the city now. But maybe we're looking at, you know, we might want to make that, that language in the land development code a little more flexible, because right now they have to be, you know, owner occupied. Well, maybe you, maybe you, you know, maybe you want some flexibility, so.
We don't allow two meters. We make, we make, we make them run off the master meter and feed them as a subpanel to the back.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that, you know, so, so, yeah, it's, it's just, you know, it's a policy to at least direct us to look at where we can make those types of changes if it's publicly acceptable. You know, we just, we don't just do it, but that, again, and that would really be part of that, that land development code set of amendments in the future, if we're just looking at something like accessory dwelling units, you know. But if we're looking at a wholesale area and saying, we want to, you know, we want to change or make, you know, duplexes, you know, a permitted or a conditional use in an area that really they're not now, that, that's big, that's, that requires public input and, I mean, that, that's a, that's a process.
When is that process instigated and when does it happen? If not now?
That's a, that, it, it can happen various ways. If, if, if staff thinks that it's something that needs to be addressed, I mean, we can, we can, you know, set up some sort of community engagement effort to see where it might be received. People might want it. Like a neighborhood can come to you and say, we want it.
But that, but that could also be a slippery slope, because now you're, now you're getting into people say, okay, I'm going to, I might have multi-family and now we're RVBO and.
Verbos are a different thing altogether.
Yeah. Whether you know it or not, you know.
The way I see it, it looks like we're working backwards. We're making it available to people to come in for, in case now all of a sudden it's needed and we'll have public input. Well, they're already lined up for their public input to, you know, prioritize residential development within a quarter mile of public transportation and needs of daily living. You know, the, one of the things about Tarpon is, you know, a lot of the people that live here work outside of it. It's not, we're not St. Petersburg, where people in St. Pete don't leave St. Pete, and they don't want to. They're fine with just traveling around in St. Pete. I wouldn't, my parents always worked out of the city. Now, a lot of the people coming here now aren't like that, and they want to all live here, and that slows things down. And the public, I mean, coming home from work is impossible because of the traffic, because people that live here, that moved here recently, just want to, they live in Tarpon. They don't, they want to ride their bikes. They want to drive 10 miles an hour, and that's fine, but the more that, the, the public transportation, like, I don't want, you're, we're creating opportunities and you're saying, well, if somebody wants to come in, then we'll have public input. But why are we changing it now to create an opportunity for public input if we're not, the demand isn't there now? So, let's just leave it. Until somebody asks for these things, why are we opening it up to say, hey, do you guys want this now? We've, we've made it open for you. Now, now, come do your surveys, which are completely skewed, that we'll, we'll date, and then we'll put our, I mean, why, just let them ask for it. No one's asking, we're, we're full. Why are we making these opportunities so easy for people?
We still have to plan for a certain amount of population increase.
A small amount. In 17 years, we've, we've increased less than, I think, was it 3,000 people? It's very small.
And so, what, what we're, what we're saying, so if you, you know, if you notice, we're not proposing any density increases at all as part of this.
You're changing the vision now.
But, and so, and that's, and that, those, those, that place-based area map, which identifies those, kind of those, you know, the suburban areas, the downtown areas, and it's like, when we, and maybe, you know, maybe you don't accept the public input that we received so far.
No, I don't.
We've had a lot, and that's, 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 that's fine. But based on what we, you know, what we heard from, from the public is, you know, of the housing types that they supported, there was support for one, two, three, and four family residential. Now, I'm not saying we want to put that all over the whole city. Absolutely not. It's, you know, it is a, well.
No one's coming, no one's asking for it. Why are we making changes for people that haven't even asked for?
We're not, we're, I'm not saying that we're, I'm not saying it's going to happen anywhere.
Well, no, but if it does, we're making it.
We're creating the opportunity in the future for it to happen, but until there's a public effort to do it and, 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 and put it in place, it, it, you know, that.
Well, so, you're, you're saying we'll add it, but currently, there's no zoning for it?
Correct. I mean, we're not, you know, I'm not proposing that when we update the land development code that all of a sudden in the R100 district that we're going to say, single-family, one, two, you know, one, two, three, and four family are appropriate housing types in the R100 zoning district. No, that's not what, you know, that's, you know.
Well, I mean, you know, the, the last board of commissioners meeting, I think, you know, I watched it twice. It took me a while to figure out how dangerously close our commission, almost one vote short, of basically almost allowing a zoning change based on a private agreement between a developer and an HOA president that we had no way of enforcing or making sure that it happened, these people could have turned around and just sold the property. And we almost just, I mean, why don't we just basically just set up private developers and neighbors and little mediation rooms? Let them work things out. Like, we can't be making decisions, but they, they can come to us. We used to have it where they did have, have to have a conditional use plan for a zoning change. So, we can just go right back to that, because we're not where we used to be. You know, we are, we are very full. We're, we're a city that has a lot to offer. We should make it hard to come, because, hey, we can be picky. Why, why are we just saying yes to everybody? We should be saying no more. We can choose who we want to come to our city.
And I don't, I don't think we're doing that.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't think that we're saying yes to everybody.
No, no, we're not, but, but, but the, you know, we're not, we're kind of doing, what we're doing on this code is we should be making it more restrictive, and yet I feel like we're making it less restrictive.
That is a policy decision. If this board wants to say, recommend that there's nothing in here that, you know, would facilitate any additional residential development over the next 30 years.
I'm saying smart development. I'm not saying no residential, but like, I'm just trying.
And here's where it's a slippery slope. I want my mother-in-law to live with us, but I want to build, I want to build a, you know.
ADU, isn't that what that is?
Yeah, what do you call it? Granny, what do you call it? Granny suite?
I thought, oh, those ADUs or was it?
Accessory dwelling units.
Yeah, you know, I want to build one for my mother-in-law, you know, and I could see the need for that as we have aging parents and we want to be able to provide family support. But I, I, I have a pro, you know, now if somebody converts that to a rental.
An Airbnb, yeah.
Okay, or just a rental, a long-term rental, and I think that the value, I think that it impacts the neighborhood as opposed to having the family unit living in, in the house with an attached mother-in-law suite or detached mother-in-law suite. So, I don't, I don't know how you control that, or I don't know how you restrict that. But I think that's why you got the, people wanted to see it, because that's their, maybe their thought process is, you know, when I get old, maybe I give my house to my kids and I just move next door, you know, which.
I mean, right now, there are, we have restrictive covenants that have to go in place to have an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
They really allow that.
But is it, is it, are there restrictive covenants to include leasehold, leasehold interest? Or can we restrict leasehold interest?
I, I'd have to look up what it says, but basically, it can't be separately metered. The, the primary, it has to be, there are things that frankly, I think are difficult to enforce, even though they're restrictive covenant, but, you know, it has to be owner occupied, so the owner, you know, the owner, so you can't, theoretically, if you have a house and you have an accessory dwelling unit and you've complied with all that, you know, the only, you know, the only person, the owner has to live in the primary house. And, and they can't be separately metered, there's, oh, there's a hand, yeah, there's a restriction on the, the square footage, things of that nature.
I thought we already had that, it was already allowed here.
We, we do, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, all we're saying, you know, all we're saying is that with this policy is that we recognize that according to Florida statutes, we have to, we have to accommodate for population, a certain population growth. We have to do that. And we're saying that the best way for us to do that, when we did the analysis, is that our existing densities and intensity, our existing residential densities versus what's actually developed is sufficient to, to work within that. So, you still have an underlying density limitation. So, if you've got a 10,000 square foot lot that's got one house on it and the, and the density is five units per acre, you may not, even though the zoning might say you're eligible to have a duplex, you may not physically be able to do it. You may just not have enough density, they haven't done the calculations, but what we're, but that's what we're, so it's, it's very kind of area by area. You may not be able to just, the intent is not to just, you know, there are some cities that are literally abolishing single-family zoning. That's not what we're trying to do here. I think that's just, you know.
Well, I know, I mean, but a lot of us, we're already a ton of, like, we're already mixed-use. I mean, downtown has apartments and it has, I mean, we're already kind of like there, and so, I mean, it's like, what, how much more? But yet people still want more and they want more and, you know, it's like the lifeboat. I mean, you know, we can only sustain so much and, and still be a successful, you know, city, so I just don't want to keep opening up until we can't sustain everything and everybody.
No, I, I, I understand. I understand what your, you know, what your concern is. And, and we're trying to meet housing needs across a range of incomes too, which is really difficult.
I, I understand. I just don't see it as even possible. I don't really, like.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it, it does.
Without an actual number and somebody here to propose something, how can we say something's affordable, like?
Well, that's, well, that, yeah, that's another matter altogether. Actually, I think Tarpon probably, just if you're looking at the Schimberg housing analysis, you know, we actually are in far better shape for meeting affordable housing needs here than the rest of Pinellas County, I would say. The further south you go, the worse it gets. You know, so, I don't feel like that we have as, nearly as much pressure for affordable housing needs here as you might see, like, in, in Clearwater, St. Pete areas. So, that, you know, we're kind of fortunate in that, you know, and I think, to me, I think one of the, you know, one of the things that I think about Tarpon that's really, I don't know if it's unique, but the thing that's really attractive to me is, you know, if you, if you want a typical suburban, you know, house, we got that. You want an urban downtown lifestyle, you know, where you, we've got that. We've got beaches, we've got, I mean, so, you know, you get, we've even got some, you know, less dense areas as you go out, you know, farther, farther to the east where, you know, we're saying agriculture is appropriate, you know. So, you know, you've got something for everybody, and I think that's what we're trying to, you know, I think that's important to hang on to.
Agreed, yeah.
I absolutely agree with that, and that's what we're, that's really what we're trying to get at with that place-based area map. So, you know, if, and we, you know, and what we heard from the residents, when we did the, you know, the outreach, and we're going to have to do all that again as we start going through, you know, adoption and stuff. So, that, you know, one, two, three, and four family, and when we, when we showed those housing types and what people were thought were acceptable housing types in these, in these areas, that's what we were getting. You know, you weren't getting feedback, you know, for anything that was more than probably, you know, fourplexes and eightplex. They don't want, you know, we, we heard that loud and clear, so, you know, in these, you know, and that's only in the, really, the, the more dense areas, the downtown areas, where even those things would, you know, are, are acceptable. So, so, we, we heard that, so, we got, you know, I think we're fortunate in that we do have untapped density available. It's just, we have to, if we're going to tap it, it needs to be tapped in a very context-sensitive manner that doesn't upset the balance of everything.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, just the transportation thing, you know, the buses, the way they stop now can hold up traffic for, I mean, 10 to 15 minutes on alternate 19, and it makes it impossible to get out of Tarpon. That's the biggest hassle for a lot of residents is just, just getting across the street.
Well, I don't see the buses going anywhere, so, and that's not, that's not ours.
In a car, getting across the street in a car.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand. All right, so. So, objective 5.4, again, we're talking about workforce housing opportunities. A lot of this is really housing and affordable housing-based. I'll let y'all kind of chew on that and if there's other questions you might have about this section. And this, we have a lot of overlap with the transportation element, so, I know, we, we were trying not to have duplicative policies and objectives between the future land use and, and transportation, but again, if it's something that is really important to you or you think needs to stay in the future land use element, then, you know, we can certainly do that.
We're in six yet?
Okay, question for you. Oh, I'm at, I'm sorry, I've gone to six already, so.
Yeah.
I'm at six. Yeah, so let's be at six.
How many chickens can we allow?
Who's going to force that?
That's actual, what? We're, we have a chicken ordinance. What are you, what are you talking about?
Well, agri, urban agricultural.
Oh, urban agriculture, yeah.
Yes.
No, we've, yeah.
And farming, you know, as a farmer, I have chickens. I may have something else.
So, we actually, we actually have an urban chicken ordinance already in place.
I, I know, because there's, there's some of these co-edics in the softball field.
And, you know, a lot of this also gets more to, you know, community gardens and, and things of that nature, and at least trying to have some agricultural, urban agricultural uses in the city, whether it's, right now, everything is really geared toward your personal use. There's really not a lot of, you know, outlets or areas for, you know, for urban farming as a, as a profession, so to speak, or a place where you can actually invite the public in, sell goods and things like that, so. It's a sustainability thing.
We could have endangered Tarpon chickens, like they have endangered Key chickens.
Right.
And have them add charm to our town.
We were, we were just discussing the other day that we were a little bereft, because we hadn't seen our favorite fluffy-footed chicken out here on the trail that looked by City Hall. We see them all the time, but probably not the point of the.
I have a question about six, but I think someone else did first.
but I'm reading Objective 1.1, and maybe there's just a whole bunch of language missing, is that it doesn't say a thing about industrial uses.
Where did that go?
So moved under Objective 1.1, and again, there might be a whole bunch more to Objective 1.1 that just can't be played out here.
Sometimes I have to go to the clean version and look.
Is it 1.1?
It's 1.1, now it's 1.1.6.
Okay, okay, thank you.
It might be easier to, to look at the clean, cause it's all in order, you can look at 1.1.6, but.
So much paper.
And, and this also, you have to, you know, objectives fall under different goals, so you have to look at the goal language and then the objective and then policy, so it's a little tiered.
Okay, moved under Objective 1.1, okay, so then it became a policy.
Yep.
Oh, golly gee, of course, 1.1, 1.7, just, just, I can't read, is pretty much what it says.
It's hard to follow this stuff, it really is.
Okay, but that would.
The word industrial isn't there, though.
That could be it, and then that, that would segue into there is an intense amount of pressure on our industrial stuff, this is great policy, whether that industrial use is maritime industrial as found on the south side of the Anclot River at the sponge docks at the end that's being pressured by restaurant use, would that be an, a, an example of protecting industrial use where we're losing our working waterfront to multi-level restaurants?
That certainly is part of it. Now, inside the special area plan, that's, that's kind of on the south side, you know, toward the end of the sponge dock, that's, a lot of that's already in the special area plan, some of it though is industrial, you know, stammer shots, so yes, that all, that all applies, and certainly on the north side of the river, potentially losing, you know, industrial to, you know, I mean, again, the, the pressure is for residential development, so.
So that is the segue I was really looking for, is that, that, that area, northwest river, where I'll disclaim my oldest daughter lives on Jeru Boulevard, which is a series of duplexes, she has a single-family residence, and right behind her is a boat diesel engine repair shop, and it is stunning what comes out of that. So, it's just a living example, cause I'm there every day, of that industrial residential, the desire for more residential, the protection of industrial, so, and that area's gonna get more and more pressure.
Yeah.
And perhaps a special area plan for that zone, that area, that center?
Yep.
Okay, that was a plan of words from the past. Is that something that is in the works or that could be addressed?
So again, yeah, so again, if you go, if you look at that place-based area map, that whole area, we categorize as transitional and specifically stating that it needs its own planning effort.
Yeah, cause I tell you what, that, that, north, the north side of the river.
Yeah.
You know, it, it, believe it or not, I mean, tourists love to see a working waterfront, it's not the shops, okay, it's not, even though they're the restaurants are the best, I think, in, in the state, it, it's the working waterfront that, that people love to see, and, and if we start taking away that north, the, the north side of the river from, from that industry, then that will changes the character, that's irreversible.
And that, those areas are, what you're talking about, Mike, is also captured on that place-based area map, there's a stack of them right here, we've, you know, we've carved out the working waterfront areas, the heavier waterfront, and then you've got the more transitional areas, which is farther up in the.
So would actions have to take place for that additional planning for a special area plan? What, what do we need to do to make that from a good concept, hey, we've recognized the demand and the need? Now, that's a whole nother work, like you need more work, but, but how do we move that forward so that's evaluated on its own?
Again, and that, that happens through policy, so directive policies in the future land use element, and did we specifically put one in for the place?
We have, we have. Where we basically recognize the place-based area map, I think it's under.
We've said it needs to happen as part of the place-based area, but a separate policy.
Yeah, so we have goal two, and it's, Objective 2.1 just basically establishes that map and then the purpose behind it, and then we have all the different categories with their intent statements, which say require, you know, additional planning efforts, but that sets the policy by having it in the comp plan, so we can, we can go to the commission, the commission come to us, someone come to us, and we have the policy to back up an additional planning effort.
So then it becomes an effort, it becomes incumbent on the planning department to say, this is, you know, we need to, either we're internally going to do it, you know, or we need to hire a consultant or somebody, but we need to do a special planning effort for that area, the other area is, is the US 19 corridor that we're.
We, yeah, I, I'd love to see the city make it very, very difficult for, for that to change the character, cause, you know, and I'll give you the example, political pressure in Pasco County, what is it, Holiday Park, we wanna try to convert that into a large marina and restaurants and the whole nine yards and, and, cause somebody with, you know, quite a bit of money, it's a political pressure.
Oh, you're talking about Anclot Park, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and that would devastate, that would devastate the working waterfront, quite frankly.
Well, I don't know enough about the area to, to weigh in on that, but if there was additional verbiage that we could put in now that would create a sense of urgency rather than, we need to look at that too.
Right.
Let's look at it by a year or a date or, and, and even call that out, cause there's other areas that need it too, this one's close to my heart, so I'm just gonna say, hey, I think that just from what I see driving through there, it's gonna start tipping, and if we're not ahead of it, it's gonna get ahead of us.
And I like to make a point about, you know, areas in the city being close to your heart, you know, I've expressed, you know, that many times here, and it's, I think it's important to remember that we're not here to change things for, like, around people that move here and where they live because they don't like where they live and what's happening around them. You know, if you don't, I'm on the community page sometimes, I'm not allowed on there, but I do go on there, and it's hilarious how people go on there and they're like, where do I find this, where do I find this, where do I send my kids to school, how did you get here? I don't know how you moved to Tarpon Springs and have zero clue about our community, okay? I live at the sponge docks, I was, you know, my dad was raised there, there's music from three different places at all times, and I don't complain because I live there, this is my, I chose this, I cannot complain about it, I'm not going to go to the city and say, rework everything around me so that I am more comfortable, no, you know what, if I don't like it, I'll just go someplace else, and that's what we need, the message we need to send people is, we can be better, but we're not gonna change, cause you move here and you want something better and different, then just don't come here.
I, I think this board is non-transitory, you know, you know, like, I live here, I work here, I'll die here and get buried here.
His mom lives down the road from me. We try to bring a perspective like that, and whether anyone wants to listen, that's fine, but, you know, I, it, it is, is one, and I listen to everybody's else's as well, because I think that's why we're here, is to bring, otherwise, we just say everything, everything's written down, so we try to bring an extra effort, like, to like, hey, this is.
And it's a balancing act, and you try to move forward and preserve the character that we have, it's really, it's really difficult, it really is difficult.
It is, it is.
Just in my lifetime, where I've seen, I've seen the, the, the change of this community, and, and not that change is bad, but too much change.
Too quickly.
Really doesn't benefit.
Sure.
The, the, uh, white people moved here.
To, to Mr. Vessi's point, you know, we can, we can wordsmith some example policies that, you know, we can look to include that are a little more directive, if that's something that, you know, of, within X number of years, you know, conduct a special planning area or planning effort for these areas to, to further guide growth and development or however that, we can come up with something to, to that effect that's a little more directive than, than, than how it is now, that's not a problem.
And that's just a thought, and to segue off what the lady said and the gentleman is that, I've seen two residential developments be put in that industrial area because there's not a good plan in place. Now, one might be outside, one might be inside, but if, if there aren't good guidelines established, the developers will find the workaround, they always do, they'll find the loophole and they'll work around.
And, and just to just make sure that everybody is aware, you know, under the, the Live Local Act that was adopted on, it goes into effect October 1st, we have some prime properties up there that.
Can't do anything about.
We can't do anything about, that very well may end up being, you know, basically mid-level affordable housing, it could be up to 120% AMI, and not only are you not gonna see it, the board's not gonna see it, cause we have to administratively review them, and so it's, it's a, I'll, I'll, I don't know if you wanna take a moment to talk about the Live Local Act, or, you know, we're, we're evaluating it now, we intend to try to put some, something together for, for everybody so that people do understand that this is coming, and we're trying to identify, so these are the zoning districts where it's applicable, these are, you know, and it goes as far as saying, we have to allow whatever the maximum density that's allowed in the city, we have to allow that, whatever the maximum height that's allowed within a mile of the project, we have to allow that. It, it basically, it, it, it obliterates local home rule for these projects, and so just putting it out there, I mean, basically, industrial, commercial, and mixed-use zoning are all on the table, and there's not, you will not have a public hearing, you will not, unless, unless the city decides to challenge something and say, we're just not, and we're gonna let it play out in court, that's obviously an option, but it's, so it's gonna be, and, and I'm, I, my fear is that the properties on the north side of the river are prime targets, doesn't matter about coastal high hazard area, doesn't matter about, I mean, they still have to meet, you know, they have to meet, you know, storm water and land, you know, and things like that, but height and density, you know, are, and our hands are like shackled.
Surprise.
So, your best-laid plans, Mr. Vessi, I'm afraid.
I guess that good catch.
At least the cost of the property will make it a little more difficult for them.
It might.
Well, and then Ford Pinellas is of the, like, mindset is to not change everything automatically, right, is that?
For industrial?
Well, no, in, in preparation of the live, I thought it went in July 1st, but maybe that postponed.
I thought it was, oh.
Maybe it was signed in.
I thought, maybe it's, there's specific.
I think there's a grace period.
Okay, but I'm sorry, ask, your Ford Pinellas?
Right, on, on their website, because a lot of the counties are, were trying, in, in, knowing that that's coming in preparation for it, making their code, I guess, more amenable to some developers and, you know, but the Ford Pinellas site, I went on there and I looked and they're saying, don't change it just yet, don't do anything, and, you know, especially if, you know, I guess you're a little bit more full than some other counties and just kind of wait and see, but.
What, you know, some of the things that we're thinking about are, you know, okay, we, you know, if we have to respond to the Live Local Act, so like right now in the industrial districts, you know, we've, we don't have anything for how residential, to take density and hi, density and, and height off the table, but all the other, you know, we could say, okay, you have to abide by the dimensional criteria of the RM zoning district, something, or you've gotta have, if it's, you know, if the pro, if it's adjacent to actual developed industrial, you've gotta have a buffer of X, those are the types of things that I think we can put in place to respond to that, whether or not if we, I don't know, you know, how quickly we can get something like that done, is, but that's some of the stuff that we're looking at.
Well, I guess it would be like if they can do it without us changing anything, then just let them do it, without changing something that they, we don't need to change maybe, I guess.
Right, no, yeah, I, I, the, it seems like the intent is, what, well, at least we would like to be able, are we having a tornado?
No, it's an amber alert.
Oh, it's an amber alert, okay, just checking, cause I was, there was a storm going on and I'm like, do we wanna be on the second floor of this building right now?
Please, of course.
I think some basic guidance of, here's how we interpret it and how we intend to administer it, we also have a 10-day turnaround time to respond to an application, so, I mean, that, they put that in, and if we don't, it's just deemed approved, so we got, we've gotta get our ducks in a row, yeah, exactly, so, so there's a lot of things that came out of that Live Local Act, if you like, we can.
It wouldn't be the first time that any, since, it doesn't have to go through any of the boards, that we would know about it, like the city, I guess, the residents.
I mean, you know, what we would intend to use would be our technical review committee, but they only meet once a month, so I ca, sometime, I may not be able to say, we got an application in for a project under Live Local, you know, and I wanna put it on the next TRC meeting, if that TRC meeting is three weeks away, I can't do that, we're gonna have, so, we have to figure out how we're going to operate, so, I mean, we'll do our best, I think what, you know, some of the things we've talked about was, you know, putting a connect Tarpon page up with, you know, at least to, you know, so that we can inform people, so we're still working through all of that, but I just, I did wanna put it on your radar, and if you're interested, we can forward a link to a recent webinar that was last week that one of the, like, central planning committees, one of the regional planning agencies put on.
I knew it was 10 days, I knew it was quick, but damn, that's.
Yeah, yeah, it is, so, we can forward that if you're interested in watching that, that webinar, it's pretty, pretty informative, so.
Well, at, at least the properties that would be potentially involved in that aren't on the water, so they, they don't affect the view across the water to the, to the docks and everything, they're, you know, I'd still hate to see it happen to some of those areas over there, but.
I could, yeah, I, I, I mean, I would, I would think it would be very difficult to, waterfront property is just a different animal altogether, I just can't imagine that they can pencil a project and make something like that work.
And there's, yeah, there's no significant unbuilt properties, I mean, I, I live on the north bank and I work on the north bank and, and.
The stuff that's further inland.
There's not anywhere that's not inland, yeah.
Regina, how long does that, is that, like, until they run out of the $711 million or five, whatever, like, how long is that enforced?
There's very, there's actually various dates in, cause I'm looking at the actual laws of Florida, it's chapter 2023-17 laws of Florida, and that's kind of, I'm scrolling through it, and they have different sections that have different expiration dates. Some go as long as, as like 2033, some are a lot closer, like 2026, so, but also remember with those expiration dates and a subsequent session, they can go back and they can make those, they can change those dates, they can change those sunsets, which, which happen sometimes.
It's not forever.
It may depend, well, it may depend whether or not they get funding in subsequent years for some of those, those programs that they're implementing.
Okay, thanks.
And it does take effect, I did look, it is July 1st is the effective date, I was trying to find the paragraph with the grace period.
I think October 1st were certain things that.
We have to do, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so we were on 6.2, I guess? Or 6.2, I'm sorry, 6.4, that was where Mr. Vessi left off with his questions, so.
Where are we?
Mr. Vessi had left off it, he was, had brought questions up about the, the industrial stuff that was Policy 6.4.1 and 0.2, under the old, you know, the current language.
Alright. Looks to me like everything up to about seven is things that's, that's, that you've, you've listed where it was moved to or what it was combined with, or, or relatively minor text changes. It may depend, well, it may depend whether or not they get funding in subsequent years for some of those, those programs that they're implementing.
Okay, thanks.
And it does take effect, I did look, it is July 1st is the effective date. I was trying to find the paragraph with the grace period.
I think October 1st were certain things that.
We have to do, yeah. Okay. All right, so we were on 6.2, I guess? Or 6.2, I'm sorry, 6.4, that was where Mr. Vessi left off with his questions.
Where are we?
Mr. Vessi had left off it, he was, had brought questions up about the, the industrial stuff that was policy 6.4.1 and 0.2, under the old, you know, the current language.
All right. Looks to me like everything up to about seven is things that's, that's, that you've, you've listed where it was moved to, or what it was combined with, or or relatively minor text changes. Yeah, we're, we're pretty close.
And like, you know.
I heard it mentioned at one previous meeting, yeah.
What's that? I'm sorry.
The Live Local Act.
Oh, yeah.
There's been a lot of postings, articles, stuff coming out about it, so.
I talked about briefly, I think, in the very first workshop.
Which is what?
Yep.
Local.
The Live Local, but it was like kind of.
What?
The Live Local Act is what we're talking about.
Oh, that, yeah.
Local Act, we live local anyway.
What, what?
Requires housing by industrial and and commercial.
Pat, would that have been included in the, in the legislative update that you were forwarding to us on a regular basis? Was that Live Local Act in there?
It was in there.
Hi, this year I didn't forward you the continuous, but I did forward you the
Renee, what's the effect on vacant land and with, in terms of that?
With the Live Local?
Yeah, I mean, anything, there's, something had come out of one of our future land use things where that, I thought that was a good thing, but looking back, I'm not so sure as far as any type of, I don't know, eminent domain or anything. I'm just worried about like those.
Oh, um.
Or, because I think there was also a clause in there about commercial property and how they can, if something's owned commercially, they can just, they can just use that too. They don't even worry about.
Yeah, it, it's, yeah, it applies to commercial, commercially zoned, industrially zoned, and mixed-use zoned. The thing that was most interesting about the webinar that I watched last week, they had an attorney that was, that gave a briefing at the beginning of it. And, and I don't fully understand this, but the, apparently the way it's written, it, it pretty much just disregards your comprehensive plan. So, it, you know, so things like whatever, you know, land use doesn't really come into play, apparently. Because that's part of the comp plan. You know, Regina, jump in and tell me if I'm wrong.
No, you're right.
So, so, you know, we have, you know, so any zoning district that has residential plus any kind of, not, the only thing it seems sanct or sanct is pure residential zoning. So, you know, all of our single-family and our residential multifamily districts do not apply. And so I think, you know, obviously, it just seemed like there was a, you know, there was a conscious attempt to basically in industrial, commercial, and mixed-use areas. So if it's residential office, you know, that, you know, if it's an affordable housing project that has at least 40% of its units at 120% AMI, which really is workforce housing, you know, that's, that's probably about, you know, an income level of $65,000, $70,000, you know, in this area. So, you know, if that, you know, and then break that into your rental, you know, whatever, that's what is required to, or what is allowed to develop on those commercial, industrial, and mixed-use zoned properties. And doesn't matter what, so, and then the, the density is based on the, the highest density within, in your jurisdiction, within one mile, and same thing for height. The things that I'm a little sticky on, does that mean, so like, we have, and it, and it's commerc- it's, you know, commercial, whatever the height is, you know, so, so for, in our highway business zoning district, we have one use hotels, which are allowed a height of 70 feet. So,
Yeah.
is that the height that we have to allow if it's, if the project is within one mile of that zone?
That's, so that's what it says. It says, a municipality may not restrict the height of a proposed development authorized under this subsection below the highest currently allowed height for a commercial or residential development located in its jurisdiction within one mile of the proposed development or three stories, whichever is higher. So they get the higher of the.
If the city wasn't proposing to buy the Roosevelt property, would that be a place that they could?
Yes, ma'am. I would say yes.
Well, and so if, if the development that we saw a few years ago that had part industrial and part residential, and and most really more industrial probably as far as the square footage goes, today, under that, it could have been entirely.
No, because.
It says 65% of the total square footage must be used for residential purposes under the legislation, for when it's a mixed use.
When it's the mixed, yeah.
If it's a mixed-use development, minimum.
But it could be 100%.
It could be 100% residential.
But, but it seems to be very, but it's very focused on rentals. It's not voc- it's single-family detached, even if it's affordable, is generally, from what I'm being told, is not, is not a product that's in play here. It's, so it's, it's multifamily residential rental is what this is really targeting. But if that's what had been proposed, then yeah, I mean, that's.
Is this a planning emergency?
Well, I don't know if it's an emergency, but we're having to deal with it, that's for sure.
I, I mean, so we're at a workshop, going into every minute detail about making a nice organized plan, and this just gets dropped and says, your rules mean nothing.
I, I mean, I've been, I've been reading about it, because we talked about it in the very first meeting. So I've been researching.
I mean, we're, I mean, we're just, we.
I'm glad I missed it all along. I'd be sick to my stomach.
We feel like that, that there's going to be certain properties that are going to become extremely attractive for this.
What about like Corcoran's, Corcoran's Park? Like, would that be, is that not big enough?
That's, that, that actually is recreation land use. So that one's safe.
There's good news.
There's a property for sale right across from my business.
I think it's residential.
Now, the zo- well, the zoning on it is residential. So it may not, it may, it may not be protected.
Yep.
So, you know, 22 units per acre essentially is what we're looking at as, you know, potential.
But the warning that you'll have is like, they'll just come to you and then you have to, and that's.
Here's an application.
Yeah, and it says they must. I mean, it's a whole list of things that they just have to approve.
But I mean, you won't go to like the building.
Well, the building department will certainly have to review.
You'll have some heads up and like.
Yeah, I mean, we'll be the entry point.
Okay, but still, that's what I'm saying, you, and then, then you'll put it on like connect tarp and, I mean, I guess.
Yeah, I, we'll.
Just to like, say, hey.
We'll try to do something like that, yes, at least as a, you know, so that people do know what's coming. Not that it will do any good, but we'll, we can definitely, yeah.
So you know, like you said, it's across the street from them. Because then, you know what we'll get is people be like, well, how did this happen? And why didn't you tell me?
Yeah, so, and that's, that's why we, I mean, we do want to have a general information page on the Live Local Act, what, what the effect of Tarpon Springs might be, what zoning districts where it could, you know, you know, we kind of, we're trying to lay those things out, at least so that people do understand and they're not, you know, completely surprised when it happens. So.
The Corcoran's Park is safe. It's in R60.
Good.
Oh, it's residential, that's right. It is. So.
Can we rezone a few things real quick?
In, in the corporate world, they call it a poison pill, right? There's still time for a poison pill.
There's, there's some parcels over there that I'd rather be single-family residential right now, for sure.
That's an interesting approach. Resetting the entire city's single-family residential.
Beat them at their own game.
Well, let me answer your question. Is, is the commission parallel with what we're doing? Are they, you know, the changes that were, were?
For the comp plan?
Yeah.
That, no, at this point, I am, we're solely working with y'all to get to a, hopefully a product that, that I can present, yeah.
Because I don't see them spending the time we're spending.
Exactly. No, that's, I think, and I think they welcome y'all, you know, your, you know, your input and 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 wordsmithing and everything on this. So, because, yeah, you're right. I mean, there, there's other, other issues on the table, so. All right, so we were. To get all the way to Goal 7? Okay, so now we're on to temporary lodging facilities, which we pretty much got rid of.
And there's, yeah, there's a big table and everything that's just gone. You want to just briefly explain to us what's, what's gone here?
Yeah. That table, again, was something that was in the countywide plan rules that we adopted. I don't know when that took place. Was that while I was gone? Yeah, to take, the county developed this alternative temporary lodging density process to allow for higher, like, hotel, you know, densities, you know, to, so that, we adopted that into the plan. It, it was by development agreement only, I believe, to be able to take advantage of these. So this is like, in lieu of our standard 40 units per acre hotel density, if you wanted to go through a development agreement and go through a special process, you could get these higher hotel density units per acre through a process. So we have basically jettisoned all of that. And where did we land on this?
This one, I think all the information that's in here was not current. Because since it was originally put into the plan, Ford Pinellas is updated. So to avoid those issues, we removed the specific.
Thank you, okay.
Language. And then in the land use categories, which is the table that we'll discuss next or next time, we basically just referred to that section of the countywide plan. So it's still an opportunity, but it's just, now it's consistent with.
Yeah, so we're just referring to the process that, under the countywide plan versus, because this is, yeah, this is out of date and didn't keep step with, every time they made a change.
And that brings us to the end, doesn't it?
Do y'all want to take a break? I hear, I hear the need for a break.
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
All right. Mr. Chairman, how many minutes?
10 minutes.
10 minutes? All right. Oh, all right. Okay, excellent. The future land use categories?
Is that the flu categories?
Yes.
You got a different handout?
So it should be a strike through underlying, it should be dated May 11th, I think? Is that the latest one, Ally?
Yes.
May 11th?
That's flu.
This is even more difficult to read for the strike through.
Yeah.
So, what are we going to?
The actual future land use map categories and rule categories.
Categories and rules, strike through.
We work with this with the map?
You have a map, too.
Oh, okay.
And that's, that's this one?
No.
It says place-based area.
No, it's going to give the future land use map, current and proposed.
I don't know.
It should have, I think there's like four of them.
May 11th.
Oh, that one.
It's a mystery. I mean, it looks good.
I'm looking at it, it looks the same.
And this future land use map, is that the one that is a result of the questionnaire that we did several months ago?
Everything is kind of a result of the questionnaire.
Okay, remember we did a questionnaire several months ago on our input where we wanted to see, and, and so this proposed future land use map, is that, is that the result of that?
So, all right, so let's, this, I think, this might be one where we need to give somewhat of a high-level overview. And Ally, didn't we have a couple of slides?
Yeah.
Oh, they're up there? Okay.
There's two slides.
Okay. So, I think the, the bulk of the changes are, we were trying to follow with the countywide plan, they combined a lot of their commercial categories, they had a, you know, a whole bunch of them, into one, one category called retail and services. So, we would, you know, we would ideally like to reduce the number of land use map categories that we have, because we have zoning as well, so, to help control things. So, we picked, so, the current, but we also recognize that we also probably need to have some breakdowns with retail and services versus, you know, inside of, you know, in a, you know, like Alt 19 versus US 19, those are different animals. So, so what's now commercial neighborhood would become retail and services neighborhood. Really no, so all these are name changes, essentially. Some of the changes do affect floor area ratio and, and impervious surface ratio, so we'll talk about those. So we also, so then we took, you know, industrial limited would become employment, again, that's a rename. Industrial general just becomes industrial. And that's consistent with also how Pinellas County, I believe, has theirs named as well. So we're trying to just follow suit and be consistent with, not consistent as in we have to be, just similar. CRD, the community redevelopment district, that would become activity center, again, no real changes there other than a name change. The commercial general fishing would become retail and services water-dependent. Again, these are just kind of consistency name changes. The industrial general waterfront category would become industrial employment waterfront-dependent. And then we have a new category that's planned redevelopment district and multimodal corridor. Those are new, they're not on the map, but they're new categories. So like that planned redevelopment district is something that would probably, if we wanted to expand the smart code area, or do another similar, you know, process, we would probably use the planned redevelopment district as a land use category. It would have a special area plan and everything would have to be attached to that, similar to what we did with the smart code. Multimodal corridor, again, that's, those two districts are, we're really taking our cues from the countywide plan on those. And then multimodal corridor is just that, it's, you know, it's US 19 essentially where, you know, that's, you know, based on discussion, that might be a discussion point for y'all. If we were going to try to do a special area plan for the US 19 corridor, it would probably be designated as multimodal corridor on the land use map. So...
Just the categories?
Yeah, go ahead.
So these are all the new categories, or was it renamed?
These are ones that we combined.
So then we had some, where we combined some of the districts. So we've got resort facilities medium, resort facilities high. Those just become resort, and we reduced, looks like we actually reduced the density down from 50 hotel units to 30 units per acre on those. Institutional, we just renamed public semi-public. Transportation utility becomes public semi-public. Those were, we, those were combined. And then it looks like we reduced the floor area ratio from .7 to .25.
So, commercial to retail and services takes away storage, right? Isn't that something that's, could storage be under commercial that, which now would not be under retail and services?
It's under those.
Huh?
It's, it's a lot, and CG, storage uses is already permitted.
So it's, it's under retail and services as well?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to find the difference.
Yeah. So, so to that point, so the commercial general to retail and services, then we talked about this, this is where you would get that increase in, there's an increase in dense, in lodging density, hotel density would go up to 40. Again, that's just being kind of consistent with 40 units per acre. And then commercial, let's say, commercial limited combined with CG expanded to, so, okay, that was no name change. So, commercial limited, commercial general.
These new changes, if Moses Tucker comes back, which apparently now they have to start all over, they don't even need to come back, right? Isn't, won't this change?
If, I'm trying to...
I mean, you won't have to come back for...
It's the residential office retail.
Won't come back for the zoning, I'm saying. They can just come back for whatever they want.
Yeah, I mean, no, and, yeah, that, that would be, under this, they would be, they would go to retail and services. So all of those, the commercial general, commercial limited, commercial rec, and residential office retail would all become one category of retail and services. And, it would basically, to your point, yes, they would, they would not have to...
Because of that zoning change.
Because, they would not have to, they would not have to be back for a land use map amendment to do what they want to do. This, this would recognize the increase in the floor area and the, and the impervious surface ratio to be consistent with what's allowed in the highway business now. That certainly is, again, kind of open for debate. I know there was some concern about that increase in, in FAR. So this is a good place to maybe talk about that, recognizing that in, if this is just not palatable to y'all at this point, I'm fine with pulling that out, because I've also, on the other side of this, we've recognized that the US 19 corridor is transitional and it needs a special planning effort. So, this may be cart before the horse, is my point.
It'd be helpful to add the map, because it's really hard to see what, I'm still kind of learning what all the categories are.
So on the strike through table, even though it's also confusing, it at least shows in each of the categories, the additional uses.
Yeah, so there's some, yeah.
So, all right.
They, they help a little bit.
I think I, I would be hesitant on the floor area ratio change, particularly in an, in an area where we know we're already dealing with an artery at a, at an F level of service. Anything that allows density increases over the existing, I think we'd need to look at real closely.
I just want to provide a little clarity for, for that retail and services category. The only category where the FAR would potentially be increased is properties that have that ROR designation. The CG, CL, and CR already have the same floor area ratio. So that's the only category that would be increased.
So, and, so that's that, you know, it does include that Moses Tucker property and, you know, any other vacant properties, basically from the north side of the river up to the county line. So it's really that, that's really where the ROR is located. So, it's, it's a handful of properties. And again, if, if, if we think that, I'm perfectly okay if we want, if you want to pull out that ROR at this point and deal with it in the future, keep the CG, CL, and CR as retail and services.
Well, after everything with the Moses Tucker, you know, that whole process of coming and, you know, saying no, and saying no, and saying no, and like, when I prepare my clients for like depositions, I always tell them, if you don't know the answer, or you don't, you don't know, you don't remember, you just stick with that answer. Now, they're going to ask you a different way, but you're not going to change your answer, because they're going to just keep asking different ways, but they're asking the same thing, so don't get confused. But eventually, sometimes you just muddy the waters and you ask them, and then all of a sudden, oh, you get a different answer. And now, and so I think that's kind of what happened there. And the more I thought about, well, we couldn't explain why it was the way it was, maybe that's why it was the way it was, to prevent that. It was an odd thing, and maybe, you know, whatever that use that it prevents, you know, it's there for a reason. It doesn't mean that nobody else can be there, they just want these extra uses. So I'm just saying, like, maybe that was the reason, was to prevent that. And I mean, all of that stuff to just basically change, you know, our, our zoning, and we said no all those times, the BOC sent it back, and then they said no, and I just, you know, to just, all of that work and all of our time, just so they can come back and we can just change it, and then you can just go ahead and do what you did, what you wanted from the beginning. I just assume that was the reason for the zoning, is that it was to prevent something like that happening, which is a very dangerous slope, because as that continues, if we don't ever change it back, so you need a conditional use map, that will just become a pattern. That could have been what they wanted the whole time. To me, there never was a real plan, because he, I didn't think the goal was just to sell it, to increase the property value. You know, now, I don't have any zoning restrictions, I can sell whatever I want. I can't, no one can enforce this agreement with these homeowners, who just all of a sudden switched, you know, because of this wall I'm promising them for 25 years. Here, sell it to somebody else, and now you do whatever, you just increased my property value, and I have never had any plans. Here's a storage facility, it took me 10 minutes to put on my map. I mean, you know, for a site plan that, you know, Commissioner Lunt, I mean, I think, you know, Mr. Kuski, Mr. Kuski has brought this up before, we need to reevaluate when the BOC doesn't agree with us. And I think up until that point, we hadn't, and we were very hesitant. And I think when we're hesitant about zoning changes, you know, at least my thing is like, if I'm hesitant or I'm, then we're advisory, just go on default, if I don't feel comfortable about this, no. Let the board make that big decision, and ultimately, they did. And I think Mr. Seaman did a really good job of explaining our reasoning in putting it up to conditional use was dangerous, because you basically said, oh, it's fine, you'll come back later. Well, then if we say no, they have, okay, well, whatever, I guess that agreement that you based your entire decision on is out the door. And the commissioner, one of the commissioners that actually made the motion said I was against this, but then I saw that you guys had an agreement. And that's just not enough to just have two private people in agreement that we don't know, we only know what they want us to know. We have no idea about the rest of the agreement.
Well, the whole agreement was provided.
Well, either, but either way, it's not, it's no way you enforce it.
You know, it's a...
You know, it's...
So, what I'm looking for is, I mean, you know, from, from staff perspective, there's such, with the exception of the floor area ratio, there's not a vast amount of difference in these categories. And so to have four of them, that's, you know, we were looking to try to...
It's vast enough for them to not be able to do whatever they want.
But, so to the point, but if, but I have, like, again, I guess I'm looking for consensus. If you want to pull that ROR out of the mix here, and we'll keep it as steady state, I'm just looking for direction. I have no, I don't have a dog in this fight at this point.
I'm just trying to see past, if this was the case, I mean, you know, or just wait. I mean, it just kind of made all of what we did pointless.
Well, we've been working on this for quite some time as well. We had always, you know, so it's a...
It just stops people from coming in, and Moses Tucker is a very, I mean, they like, they're in like Arizona, and I mean, they're all over the place. Somebody made a comment about transportation, it might be a little crazy of a comment, but if you think about the location, you know, and those people, you know, like, I think it's our job to protect them from themselves, like, they don't know, like, disagreement, you know what I mean? Like, oh, we're all happy and hunky-dory, well, that could just go out the window, and they, then they would be mad at us, because we were like, well, you guys said you were happy with it, so we just took your word for it. And the city should not be operating on the happiness of two parties agreeing.
So, we, I'm going to speak for staff. We did not care about the agreement at all. We were basing our recommendation on the fact that you have a property that requires, requires a residential, as part of the development.
No, I know you didn't do that.
And you have a Duke Energy, it's, to this, from our perspective, this was one property where it made absolute sense to us.
No, and I know you did, but that's how, at the end of the day, it got changed, and that's what the commissioners were saying, that's how everyone changed their mind, because they lost sight of why we even said no at the first time, because they had five opportunities to ask us for the same thing. Nothing, nothing changed, except they were happy, and that should not have been anyone, you guys didn't base your agreement on that, but that's what the board, half of the board did.
And, yeah, I can't, can't speak for that, so...
No, but I'm just saying, but now, like, if, we went through all of that, just to be like, oh, now we're just going to change it, so you can just have whatever you, we just basically stood up for our city, and what we made it, and then you're just like, eh, here you go.
Speaking of that, okay, when we're doing these zoning changes, do we, at some point in time, look at the permitted uses versus the conditional uses on some of these zoning changes?
So this is land use, this is not zoning.
Okay.
So, the land, but, and there are, you know, you, you do have generally, you have more generalized uses listed for your land use, but you, so, you know, if you don't have something in the, you know, in the realm and the land use that is allowed in the zoning, you've got an inconsistency issue, and then you may just have to live with it. You know, it doesn't, doesn't mean that everything's going to be 100% lockstep, it just doesn't work that way.
Well, I'm confused. If you've got, if this is a land use map, okay, if it's a land use map, okay, and we're heavy industrial, land use is industrial, okay, doesn't that mean that it's zoned for heavy industrial as well?
Maybe. I mean, there...
Could be different, it could be different zoning within that district.
It's only zoning when you put it in there, and then all of a sudden now zoning is part of it. Like, it's all together, we can't keep separating land use and zoning, that's how they get in. It's not separate.
Legally, they are.
Well, legally, they are, but they have implications that affect the other one, right?
So, yes.
So, you can't like, just forget about that it exists.
You know, outside of Florida, Florida has some very specific, you know, if I were practicing this in Virginia, you know, or where, or, generally, land use maps are much more general, broad brush.
Like the place-based policy.
They're all, yeah, exactly. If, if I could, if, yeah, it would really, literally would be more like the place-based area map that we've included. That's a more normal, I'll say, land use map for when you get outside of, you know, the state of Florida. But, and, we're even more complicated, because we have the countywide plan that we have to be consistent with as well.
Well, if that's the rule, that we have to change it, because it's the, I get that, but, you know...
So, but, I mean, we do not, you know, to the point of, I just want, you know, I knew that based on the whole Moses Tucker, you know, application, that this would be a discussion point, and that's why, you know, the, the biggest thing that's changing with the residential office retail, if it stays like it is, would be the FAR and the ISR increase. And if fundamentally, if y'all think that, whoa, let's put the brakes on that, because we want, we want that it's recognized as a transitional area, the whole US 19 corridor is, let's do a special area plan, let's do some planning, before we do that. Might be entirely appropriate, might not, might need to be higher, we don't know. So, keeping, I would rather keep something as status quo.
Exactly.
You know, so I'm fine with that, but I wasn't going to start changing it in midstream right now, I wanted to have this discussion with y'all. So, you know, I think what I'm hearing is, please take ROR off the table and leave it like it is on the map.
I would agree with that.
What they were saying wasn't that it was impossible, it was just impossible to do what they wanted to do, and you didn't make that Duke easement seem as big as it, like, they made it, but you were just like, eh, it's kind of in the way, but they made it seem like it was impossible.
If, I will be, I mean, if the Duke Energy easement, Duke Energy will have to approve whatever comes along. I, I have not personally put my eyes on something that said that they are preempted because of what's going to go in that, in that easement from doing residential. But, at this point, I'm kind of taking it at face value that it is. And if it is, then, now they, now they really can't do anything with the property, period, because they can't do a requirement that is part, they have to have a... Because they can't do a requirement that is part, they have to have a residential component under that residential office retail land use.
I mean, I think it, I think it needs to change. I said that in, in the meeting. It needs to change, but I don't think it needs to give a higher floor area ratio. And I honestly think if they looked at their plan and they calculated it out, that they'd be pretty damn close.
Pretty close.
To, to acceptable as it is, because that easement takes such a big chunk out of the property.
So what would be, and I think we've, the way that, when I wanna be, because I wanna be transparent about this, the, keeping the F A R in place and removing the mixed use requirement sounds much more palatable.
So take away the residential use, but don't give them all those other extra things, right?
So, and that's something that we, you know, we have, that has taken place through these strike throughs and underlines is removing that mixed use piece in that R O R district. So if you're comfortable with that, then that achieves, I think, to me, that was the bigger, that's a bigger issue for me than it is.
The just thing was like a red herring the whole time, was just to ask for more that they didn't need to say.
Yeah, yeah, they, they've torn it all up already, yeah.
And they've been there the whole time.
Yeah.
No, we don't have an email. Oh, we do have an email. It was.
So I think, you know, if, if y'all.
Just for clarity, okay, so, so if we kept R O R, basically, all of the existing entitlements would be the same, but then it would remove the requirement for mixed use, correct?
It would remove the requirement for mixed use, yeah.
So that would be actually what they specifically asked for. They were asking for more.
I mean, they will, they will not be able to do.
They still won't, they won't be able to do the storage.
R O R does not allow for.
Cause R O R does not allow for the warehouse or these quasi-industrial.
No, that's.
Well, I mean, personally, I think storage is a great use of a piece of property. Cause it, cause it, it has low traffic.
I mean, we can, we can, that's easy enough. I mean, we can add storage as a, as an allowable, or like, we can put warehouse slash storage as.
As a conditional use.
As a, you know, or as a, a threshold use or something, yeah.
Set up as, uh, with thresholds, so like so many acres could be occupied with that.
So, but why is that, why was it ever, like, is that because that category didn't exist, where you had to put a mixed use for that housing? Like, if that was that simple and there was already another category, could, you know what I mean?
No, my fault, I'm sorry.
That category already exists where you just take away the mixed use.
It, no, it didn't, no, we don't, we don't have.
For that small, it was like only five percent, right?
I'm trying to think, I think.
Very small, right?
I think that question came up the meeting about was another land use category considered?
Yeah, I, I asked that.
There was another one that was appropriate to the corridor.
The, the one, yeah, the one that shares the, the same floor area ratio is neighborhood residential, which really doesn't sound right on U S nineteen.
Yeah, and that's in neighborhood residential, I think it's pretty limited.
You know, after all of this, like, finally got to the one point, but it got so much confused and that was like the goal from the beginning. We almost just gave them whatever, everything they wanted for just something.
The other, yeah, the other way that we could approach it is we can do the name change, we, like, just like we're, we're, we're gonna have Retail and Services Limited for what was neighborhood, we could do a Retail and Services, I don't know, we'll come up with a name, that basically that recognizes the same uses, but it keeps this F A R and I S R down where it is today. And if that, I mean, I think that kind of captures. Okay, they're still gonna, you know, and to the point of if we do this and if they can make their project work, Moses Tucker make their project work, um, they're still gonna have to get a conditional use to do the storage itself, that, because that's required in the zoning, so.
It's storage when it comes in.
Yeah, yeah, but the storage is not a big deal, so.
No.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, that's gonna be the lowest traffic of just about anything you could put there, so it's, it's a good thing.
All right, um, so, okay, uh, is there any more else? Any more, Ally, you wanna flip to the next one?
This is the last slide.
Oh, this is the last slide, okay.
I think, oh wait, yeah, this is the last one.
Do we have, do we have one of the maps loaded that shows us the affected areas?
Yes, I can open that.
So we had a few series of maps that show current proposed and then we just showed the affected areas.
So I think probably the affected, this is just the current map.
I have a, a question, it's much a clarification, because sometimes the colors are hard to pull through.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna put my laser pointer up on the screen. I drew it on this map in a hash. I like to use hashes. Is it fair to say, it looks good up here in this light gray, is that all unincorporated county, top left?
Right here?
Yes. Everything in that gray, other than what's colored in a dark gray, a light gray and reds?
Let it go over here. This gray.
Yep, so that's all unincorporated county. And then this is all unincorporated county also.
Yes.
Okay, okay, that was.
With the exception of Eagle Creek, which is like.
The little, the little dots, okay, so that's all unincorporated county. Now, I just wanted to do a comparison against the place-based area map. And in that place-based, you don't have to flip to that, but there's a big, about half of that upper gray unincorporated county is, is labeled in a, in a pretty rust, almost a chartreuse.
Do you have the place-based map? I think we do.
As, as, uh, I know, I made it up, you actually got it.
That's the hazardous waysite.
Is that what it is, the restricted?
Restricted, that's the stoffer chemical.
Okay, okay, so I was just reading and it says, so I guess I don't need a special area plan for the stoffer side. It's got its own.
It's got a, it's got a big restrictive covenant on it that basically says, these are the very small set of uses that can go on there.
I tell you what, it'd go perfect there.
Solar farm.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
So that was it. I just needed to clarify that to zone and then I'm gonna plant a tiny seed.
Okay.
Without taking up anybody's more time, I like to refer to as the south gateway, the oft neglected zone of Tarpon Springs, which is county right now. And somehow we've painted ourselves into what almost is an enclave, only it's a reverse enclave.
Can you show, uh, on the map?
Are you gonna mean the other map?
So I stare at this and struggle, A, I have to travel through it a lot and just baffles me that our south gateway, which is arguably just as important as our other gateways, is this mess of county. So this was the seed I wanted to plant, is that I think that this zone almost warrants a minor special area plan to somehow wrest it away in a consistent and thorough manner, so that it's not a haphazard. Cause we can see this natural boundary line. It's completely natural. We've already got this, but yet we allow the county to approve wacky tobacky things along that corridor that are just kind of messy. Now I want to just point that out and go, hey, and this, this would also tie back to annexations, is that it makes no planning sense to allow it to happen in a haphazard manner.
Yeah.
I have no solution.
We, we talked about, if you flip over to the place-based map.
See, we talked about extending.
We talked about, so the same way that we've got that transitional on U S nineteen, we've talked about putting a transitional area on that south gateway area. A- again, to emphasize that we need some sort of a special planning effort there, but for some reason, we didn't do it.
Well.
We went back and forth and back and forth.
Opportunity, you just painted it green right there.
There absolutely is.
I can do it in half mark. I did it in half mark right here.
I think that's that property that has the eighty-eight units.
So this, I'm looking at this, so blue is S P C, is that my?
The blue is Saint Pete College, yes.
Over here, we're, that's all unincorporated by around the intersection where the trail and.
With the exception of the little.
Yeah.
And so what, it's a safety thing.
Is that the seven eleven or is that the mini mark?
Because the county turns a blind eye to what's going on there. The property owners have paved edge to edge of their properties.
Oh, it's awful.
It's horrible what's happened there. It used to be, you know, now that, because the auto lots keep hopping around and they, so they've paved everything. No permit, ruin our stormwater, and then they're just moving around like.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, you see it, I see it.
We, we, we do, um, and so I, I would not have any issues with, you know, putting, you know, that, making that, that corridor transitional as well, I, you know, and to call attention to it. We went back and forth over on this pla- on the place-based area map of try, do we go ahead and call that out, do we not, so?
No objects, I would like to, to have a little special attention.
Okay.
That's, I, we, we just talked about.
As traffic comes up, a sign, and then, then just to exert a tiny bit of control, but right now we have no control over what happens.
And I, and, and I think, you know, I'm ninety-nine percent sure that Pinellas County would be more than willing to do a, you know, a joint plan. We've talked about the same thing with the north side of the river. They recognize that, you know, they're, they would be amenable to joint planning area, you know, a joint planning process so that, you know, we look at things cohesively. Um, I, I feel certain they would. It's like everything else, you know, time and workload.
They did start a, what they called Cultural Corridor.
They did, yeah. I don't either.
What, what, what was it called?
It was called the Cultural Corridor.
Yeah.
The Historic Old Nineteen Corridor through Tarpen, um, or Dunham. And it was gonna kind of, you know, I, I kind of liked it, but they.
Nothing really happened out of it.
Dropped or it's just on hold.
I didn't know that those areas weren't incorporated.
Yeah, it's a, it's a real hodgepodge. And we, we get, you know, we'll get piecemeal annexation applications, like, somebody wants to redevelop, they need in the, you know, the, now they need to like hook up to our, it's amazing amount of that stuff is on septic down there. It's crazy. So we provide, we can provide sewer service, so we have, we force them to at least process an annexation.
On the other side too.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's an interesting one, so. And even though, it's kind of the same thing over even on U S nineteen at Klosterman, we've got, we've got, yeah, we got the car wash and we got the Saint Pete College property, but on the other side, it's still unincorporated, so.
Is that the mobile home park? Is that incorporated?
I, I'm not sure what that is. Is that a mobile home park over there on Lake Tarpen? Out there?
What's this part right?
Well, I see what you're saying. I'm saying, I'm like.
Where was it?
Yeah.
That's Oakleaf Village.
Oakleaf Village?
Oh. Eagle Creek's over there.
It is in here, that's Eagle Creek.
Eagle, Eagle Creek, we, we did, we.
This is, this is the mobile home park, I think, right here, isn't there?
Yeah, it's up, it's up.
And then there's like a shopping center.
So that's Oakleaf isn't, is unincorporated?
No, that's ours. It, all the yellow is ours.
Wait, so what's that little, that, right there?
I, I can't tell the scale. Let's see.
Yeah, it's just, you can see it's cut out.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's, uh, I don't know what that is.
Okay, so it's.
The wetland, is that that wetland?
I think it's just some, I think it's just an unincorporated property. It looks like it's one big parcel that maybe has a house.
Is that where like you take that shortcut?
Did we incorporate that?
No, this still.
That sub, that, that, that small little subdivision, that's the.
No, that's, that's a.
Yeah, yeah, that one, okay.
Go back to my zone.
The big one, no, is it? Huge rectangle. Yeah.
It looks like from the, I just went to Google Maps, it looks like it's just a.
Single family house.
I'm gonna look at the property browser and see what it says.
Oh, I guess it just looks bigger on this.
It's a, it's a big piece of property, but it's like one, it looks like one structure is on it. Okay, it might just be a house or.
And these are, this, this we need to address, the almost, that, that's.
Yeah, cause the county's not doing.
That's not, that's not, that's not incorporated.
No, it's that section.
It says it's a single family home.
Yeah.
No, 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 that's not behind. Well, yeah, but it's across the street.
That's, um.
Cruel Place Road?
I think that's roll, is that rolling, no.
Behind Draplin.
It's that nice little neighborhood that's there.
Yeah, this is just a single family home.
That is weird that that's all completely surrounded though.
Could, I guess you could require them to be, it's, it's an enclave.
No, it's not an enclave.
Yes.
Oh, that, that might qualify as an, the, the problem is though, you can't, even though it's an enclave, I mean, it's difficult to force annexation of an entire subdivision. It kind of has to be a referendum, yeah.
But doesn't our police service that?
No.
Really?
Fire department does, but police does not. Now, they have, they have first responder agreements, but it, it's in our fire district, but it's in sheriff's, just, just like the north side of the river, a lot of it's unincorporated and.
That's awkward. When you live there, you think you're in Tarpen, you call nine-one-one and send the police, that'll be the sheriff.
Send the sheriff.
Cops are stopped outside the neighborhood.
Not that I do that.
So if I make that right on red over there on alternate nineteen, the Tarpen Police has no jurisdiction to give me a ticket.
That's sheriff's problem.
Right on red and.
Right there.
There's a no, no right on red.
I, I, I don't know. Yeah, it does, yeah, don't, yeah, all right.
I just had no idea that that wasn't incorporated.
Learning things here.
I feel like y'all's attention span is pretty much done.
I got everybody doing it to math.
After so many hours, if you come to the test.
Oh, no, that's okay. No, I feel like we made good progress.
Can I just ask you a question?
Yes.
So, I feel like I'm talking the mic. So for the future land use categories, aside from the R O R changes that we discussed, was everything else make sense to you guys? And you feel comfortable with it or?
If, could you just maybe just kind of go through, because I, just learning what I did, like, I would have, no, if I had known all of this, like, going into the other meeting, I think we could have like, if we had just offered them that from the beginning, it would have.
Well, we don't have a, we don't have a category for that right now, but by making these minor changes to R O R, that it would be possible.
Or just kind of go through each one and just to, just really, well, kind of quickly, like, what's the major differences between each, with the map?
It's an ideal si- situation, timing wise, because, because what I really wanted to do was approve their proposal with the floor area ratio, it's staying the same, and there was no way to do it, so now we can fix that.
I do would, I would like to get some on the F A R, cause there's two F A Rs in the R O R right now. So if it's a retail project, it's point two oh, if it's an office project, it's point three. So I need to, I need some guidance on, I, I would recommend the point three as the, the R O R point three and with the additional, you know.
We're removing the residential anyway, so.
Yeah, we're removing the residential, so, um, I just, because since there was two in the, I just wanted to get your concurrence on, let's just go with point three, or if you want to split the baby and go point two five, I'm fine with that too, so.
So like, on the, like, the west side, I know we had kind of talked about that, that's all staying, nothing's changing on, that's like the.
So what this map is showing, so everything that's colored in, basically, anything white or gray is not affected, but any of the properties that are colored are the ones that are affected by these changes, whether it's a name change or the combining the categories. So this is the current, and then this is proposed colors. And then with acknowledgement that R O R is primarily this property, these properties up here, so that would obviously go away.
The, what are the, the biggest changes? I just wanna just.
Really, I think the R, the Retail and Services category, the combination of, I think probably the best way to look at it is on that PowerPoint if I can get to.
So from what, what's the original color that, on the, this map and then to what, and then to that, like, maroon?
Okay, so.
Well, we were not consistent with our color schemes.
Someone's did this. This is, okay, so.
So residential office, like the red, like, that is the original?
This orangey color is the retail office, wait.
Presidential office retail.
Mixed use category is this orange color. Um, I believe this kind of brighter orange is residential, is it office general?
Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
And then these dark kind of purple colors are commercial general, so. Basically, the biggest, I'd say the biggest change is probably along U S nineteen is they're gonna go in more consistent categories.
Offering more ser- more categories, is it, was it widening the?
It, yeah.
No, um, if I go back to the table.
I'm just trying to find those colors here so I can see, like, so the maroon.
What we can do before the next meeting is we can just do a map of just the retail and services and commercial general stuff, so that maybe it might cut some of the clutter out for you, um.
So like, there's transportation utility in this maroon.
Yeah.
And it's not in the first.
That's just a name change, no, it, it's a, it's a name change.
Okay.
So it goes to public, uh, semi-public, um, and it's being combined, so transportation utility and.
Institutional?
Yeah, or.
Institutional.
And institutional are being combined, yeah.
Or being, yeah, those will all be public semi-public.
I think, and we can, I, I think the presentation may have been sent to you guys, but we can send it to you, because I think that these two slides that we have most clearly say what's changed. So it says whether it's just changing names, but everything for most parts stays the same, or if something changed and maybe a density got adjusted or, um, uses or whatnot, I think that gives you a good overview. or, um, uses or whatnot, I think that gives you a good overview, and then, so it helps you when you look through the strike-through underline at the different texts.
Yeah, it's confusing, so like, because the transient word is gone, which I guess that, terrible.
Yeah, we just, we just, instead of transient accommodations, we called it lodging, so, a lot of that was just like.
The word transient has changed.
Transient.
Different, yeah.
So, and the other thing I would call attention to in the, you know, in the big strike-through underlying version of the, of the, of the, uh, categories, we did, we did, did a fair amount of wordsmithing on the purpose statements for our categories, and, because we were trying to make them, and, and we were trying to make the, that work better with the place-based area map, and what we were trying to achieve with that. So, and you'll also see in that table, we have a column that says the relationship to the place-based area map. So, a residential very low, you know, that really is, you know, appropriate in the areas on that place-based map that are agricultural and residential estate. So, we're, we're trying to put some guidance in this, that when someone does come in the future and they want to change the land use map, you know, we can say, well, you know, the intent based on the place-based area map wouldn't support that, you know, so that's.
Good, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do.
Is there any, um, is there anything between Alt. nineteen, between Dotacunese and the, and, um, Orange, or Tarpon Avenue? Just any big changes?
That's all in the special area plan, it's just.
That's, that's the.
That's special area plan, and that's just changing.
It's changing the name.
Community redevelopment district, just to Activity Center.
To Activity Center, but the special area plan, everything stays in place.
Nothing's really changing there.
No, not until we go through a special planning process to update it.
Yeah.
Could we get, and this is, if, if there are some, but in, in instances where there are density changes caused by the changes, could we get, next time, just a very brief table that, uh, that breaks those, or summarizes those, if there are any?
I'll look, I'll look through it again. I don't believe there are any aside from.
We were.
There's just one, catch two about halfway down, where it went from point-three to point-four.
That's floor area ratio, but residential densities, we were very careful about, and I don't think there's a change to residential density anywhere in these changes, so.
I'll look through again.
Because we, that was the whole, whole point of, like, based on the analysis, if future population need, we don't need to check, we don't need to touch our residential densities, so.
Yeah, so what I noted here, we're.
These are the only changes.
So, the original, you guys can't see that.
That's the one we just talked about, yeah.
Yeah, these would have been changes if you guys wanted to combine ROR with all of these categories into Retail and Services. These were the effects, this was the most effective category, that kind of goes away, and we talked about just.
Yeah, so we'll have, we'll have, well, we're gonna have, we're gonna change it to Retail and Services, pick up the uses, but we're gonna put, it'll be a Retail and Services Limited or something, I don't know, we'll come up with something, and we'll push back down the FAR and stuff to what it is today.
Yeah.
So, the only one I have noted here was CG, um.
The lodging density.
Was increasing lodging from thirty to forty units, um, for hotels, and that's, that's our highest commercial designation, um.
And we took resort facilities high from fifty to thirty.
Right.
So, why did we go up in Commercial General?
Because I think that's what the, that was the higher limit of, I think in ROR, it was.
Oh, Commercial Recreation, I think, had the highest.
No, there was one, one of those, of the Commercial Limited Recreation, one of them had a higher, it was very inconsistent, had a higher, like, forty unit per acre, so we went with the highest on the forty units per acre for hotel density, um.
Are Retail and Services always together?
Mm-hmm, um, I don't know, it is on the county-wide plan, but.
It's just interesting, the word commercials just being like.
Well, it, it's.
And now it's Retail and Services, and now.
So, it, you know, and it, it is, it's interesting, because it's like, you know, we, we kind of wrestle with that, with the special area plan, because in the SMART code, there's, there's no language in, in, like, when you look at the use tables and everything, it really focuses on things like, like, personal services, like hair salons, it all kind of gets lumped into retail.
Commercial has a, it's just, it just has a bad, oh, it's commercial, it's, it's a, you know, it's in your mind.
I mean, Retail and Services is.
I want to help small businesses.
It's just a, it's a catch-all kind of, you know, of, of, you know.
Slow and steady.
Yeah.
And maybe nobody else is, is concerned about this, but it, it just strikes me as odd to, to reduce the density of, for lodging in high-density resort and, and increase it in Commercial. I, I.
Uh, let's see, so resort facilities medium from fifty down to thirty?
It just seems inconsistent to me.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to look and see.
Medium allowed for thirty units, and high allowed for fifty, and so we went with more restrictive one.
So, I think we split, we split with forty? Oh, we went with the more restrictive.
I don't think we have any RFH properties.
We don't, yeah, we don't have, it's a category that's not used. We don't have any resort facilities high.
So, I think that's why, I think we have some, maybe, I think that's why we was buying, we wouldn't have lower, um.
But I, I, maybe, maybe, maybe forty is the, just the citywide, unless you do the alternative density, give us a development agreement process.
Yeah, I mean, why don't, yeah, why don't we be, why don't we be consistent with, with one or the other? I don't really care which.
Yeah, I like forty. It, it, thirty is really hard to make a hotel project. I mean, eh, because you still have FAR limitations, you're gonna have height and things like that, there'll be limitations.
Why give anybody some false hope, Renee White? Don't lead them on, I mean, just tell them.
We do still need lodging in the city, so, no, I mean, I think forty's a good, a good, uh, and it's like, if somebody wants more, they can go through a development agreement process and ask for it, so.
Then it can work for it.
Right.
That's fine for me.
All right, it's eight-thirty, or Zar.
Shall we?
Just a question, if I don't want to bomb, did you still want consensus on point-two, point-three, point-two-five, or tell us?
I think, I think we landed at.
Three.
Point-three, yeah.
Three, yeah.
We'll go with point-three, we'll call it Retail and Services Limited, or Retail and Services something. Yeah, it's clarified language, adding, adding words is clarified. Well, at lea- at least all the uses will be consistent. The only thing that'll be different is the.
I'm just kidding.
The limitations on the FAR. This was good tonight, folks.
It was good, yeah.
So, at the next meeting, we'll be ready to jump off to.
Yeah, I think we get done with.
The bridge?
We'll be ready to jump off to, um, some additional elements, so we'll pick up with.
We do the housing ones?
Housing, transportation.
Know what's your packet?
We got rec. open space, we got historic preservation, and we got all kinds of things, so.
What kind of many elements do it either?
Yeah.
Well, I will tell you, good meeting.
You're the, you're the candy man.
Good meeting. Are you a germ?
We're a germ. They, they've taken my gavel away. They didn't let me have it at the last meeting either.
Well, I learned that, um, I saw at the last meeting how Costa gave the gavel away. I didn't know why he did that. I guess you can't second a motion with the gavel.
Right, right.
I thought, well, that's an opportune time to be doing that.
So, do we need a?